Good evening to everyone tonight. The Village Board of Trustees meeting agenda for Wednesday, September 12, 2022, starting at 7:03 PM. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will everyone please remain standing for a moment, silence for all the victims of the 9/11 terrorist attacks and all those affected? Thank you, be seated. Do a roll call, please. Trustee Soberman?
Present.
Trustee Hagan?
Present.
Trustee Albert?
Present.
And Trustee Corrigan?
Present.
And Mayor Curley, present. Upcoming meetings, a regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 3, 2022, at 7:00 PM, and a workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 31, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Okay, now we have approval amendments. Need a resolution for approval of the August 1, 2022 Board of Trustees meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
I so move.
Motion made by Trustee Soberman, second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a resolution, approval of September 7, 2022 Board of Trustees special meeting? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, if we have, Fire Department, please, Jeremy? Still got your summer dress going, there you go, sir.
I got dressed up for you tonight.
You always look good to me, sir.
Good evening, Village Board. Couple resolutions and then one motion on the agenda for this evening. The first resolution is authorizing the Fire Department to attend the NIAC Fire Department's Chief Inspection Parade on October 8.
Can I have a motion to approve the parade for the NIAC, please?
Motion.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second resolution is to declare certain equipment surplus. I had sent the list to Ms. Raymer, I believe it was sent out to all the Village Board members. It's just a couple pieces of radio equipment and the two chief's vehicles.
Nine pieces of radio equipment, and we have two Ford Expeditions, in 2010 and 2012.
Correct.
Those are the ones that we had, the new ones we replaced, so try to get a little money back for the taxpayers now. Can I please have a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second by Hagan.
Second by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the third resolution is to authorize three members of the Volunteer Hosts Company to attend nozzle forward training at the Morris County, New Jersey Fire Training Center. There's no cost for the training, we were invited by the Muncie Fire Department. The only caveat to that was they asked if we can bring an engine with us.
Okay, very good, very good. Can I get a resolution authorizing attendance by three members of the Suffolk Fire Department for the nozzle forward training?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the last item on the agenda, which always makes Ms. Corrigan very happy, is we have three new members, two for the hook and ladder, Valdo, Simon, and Michael Dillon, and a 16, 17-year-old member for the Volunteer Hosts Company, Alexander Walker.
Okay, can I get a motion, please, to approve the new members, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Soberman.
Second by Trustee Soberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that's all.
Thank you.
If you have anything for me.
Thank you very much, Chief, always a good job, thank you for coming out day and night and watching out for our citizens.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Very good. Grant program, please, Mr. Rela, please, show me the money, Mr. Rela, show us what you've got coming in, sir.
Good evening, Board. I just have one item tonight, and that's that last week we put in for a grant for a project for the iron and manganese filtration system for our drinking water, that's with the Environmental Facilities Corps, and the cost of the project is approximately $2 million, the grant would be for 1.2 million. I do want to thank the Board, we had to have a special meeting of the Board last week in order to get a couple resolutions which were needed to be attached to the grant application, so I want to thank everyone for that. We should be hearing about the grant award, whether we get it or not in the fall, latter part of this year, and then the project can begin in the beginning of 2023.
Very good, Mr. Rela, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Culture Recreation, please. Kathy Mills, want to know, we had some great events this weekend, we had the parade for the football, we had the Suffolk First Day Mayor's Village Board Party at the pool fun day, and we also had a 9/11 ceremony that went very well also, so Kathy, will you go ahead, please?
Yes, so good evening, everybody. Few things happening this month of September. Tonight, the Fire Department is over at the pool, they officially closed the pool down tonight, they did some great drills, I got some photos for you, Mayor, give them so much credit, it was a nice evening over there. This Saturday, September 17, the Lions Club will be using the Avon Lot for a community flea market. The Salvation Army Community Day is Saturday, the 17th as well. The Street Fair will be on Sunday, September 18, that's 10 to 5. Suffolk Day, our biggie is coming up, that's on Saturday, the 24th. We have a lot of activities during the day between 11 and 3, and then the fireworks that evening around 6:30-ish, so we're looking forward to a great Suffolk Day. We've got a lot of people coming forward, being part of it, volunteers, so we're looking good, so we're excited for Suffolk Day. And then Friday, I'm sure Chief will mention, Friday, the 30th, will be the first Stair Dance of the season at the community center.
Very good.
And I think that's it for September.
Want to thank you for all the great jobs we did this past weekend, it was a lot of hours this weekend, and I want to especially thank even DPW and all your employees, Joe there and Charles, it was excellent, everybody worked hard, and I appreciate all the fine work everyone's doing.
You're very welcome.
We had a special guest at the pool party, we had Thorn, our police canine dog, with the chief, there were so many cops there, I didn't know, I was afraid they were going to eat all my burgers, so I was running low, I got nervous, but anyway, I thank everyone for a great job this weekend, thank you, Kathy.
You're very welcome, thank you, everybody.
At this point, I'd like to open up public comment, can I have a motion to open up public comment, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, second, please?
Second, Trustee Soberman.
Second by Trustee Soberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Jim, would like to make a comment? Being there is none, can I have a motion to close the public comment period?
Trustee Corrigan?
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
I second it.
Second made by Trustee Soberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Attorney, please?
Sure. A couple issues first, pardon? You know, good things first, yeah. It's been brought to our attention that some of the restaurants in the village may want to continue to have dining on the sidewalks as they had during the COVID crisis, and we have a resolution before the Board tonight, Jim can't hear me, we have a resolution before the Board tonight to set up a procedure whereby the restaurants can get approval to have tables and chairs on the sidewalk and to utilize the parking spaces immediately in front of the establishment for the passage of pedestrians, provisions in it for the building inspector to make certain that it's safe and adequate for pedestrian passage, as well as provisions for revocation should there be any issues involved with the approval.
Okay, so can I have a, can I have a motion to put some of the COVID table, outside tables and dining back into effect, I have a motion, please?
Motion, Hagan.
Motion made by Trustee Hagan, I get a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Secondly, we received a zone change petition from Extel for the construction of, potential construction of residential apartments on Washington Avenue. In order to initiate the process, the first step would be to set an escrow so that the planner can start the review. Ms. Franzen, who is our planner, suggested a $10,000 escrow, so we would be looking for approval of that tonight. What I suspect the process would be, would be that once the escrow is approved and paid, both I and Ms. Franzen will look over the application, the petition, and so forth to make sure that it's complete. At the next board meeting, the Board can adopt a resolution of its intent to be lead agency if the Board of Trustees so desires, and then we'll go from there. Ms. Franzen will do the review, so we'll find out whether or not an environmental impact statement is required. Subsequently, it will be referred to both the Village Planning Board and the County Department of Planning for their review and recommendations. Once the secret is satisfied, then the Board of Trustees can hold a hearing on the zone change petition itself. So there's a number of steps and a lot of review that has to take place before a hearing is held and the Board can decide on the matter.
Okay, just to say a couple words on it, they're looking to put, they'd come back before, they wanted maybe 170 units, and they came with 121 units, well, I explained to them pretty much, parking is a very valuable thing in the Village of Suffolk, based on, they need at least two spots per unit, so that actually goes over what other people may suggest, so they actually came back with a plan with two cards per unit, that gives then the Board, this is like a starting point, we still have to use our planning board, our ZBA, our Police Department, our Fire Department, this is just a starting point to go ahead. So what we do is we go, we ask them for money, so now we can, you know, at their cost, not our cost, so we can get a professional, well, Terry's more than a professional, but the best one out there probably, and other people also to look at it and move ahead, move ahead from there. So it's just a starting point, and we'll go from there on that. So can I have a motion for, to get Extel?
I so move. Trustee Soberman.
Motion made by Trustee Soberman, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Unfortunately, at this point...
Well, I was just going to say, lastly, I'd like to, a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss both litigation, litigation matter and a personnel matter.
Could I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Motion by Trustee...
Motion made by Trustee...
I second.
By Hagan, second, and by Trustee Soberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Just to let you know, we'll be back within seven to eight minutes, okay? That's my guess, all right? Very quick. I'd like to make a motion to come out of Executive Session?
I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Soberman, second by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yep, the Board and Executive Discussion Session discussed settlement of an action against the village entitled Cable versus Village of Suffolk. I think at this point, if the Board's amenable, appropriate motion, be a motion to approve the settlement agreement and authorize the mayor to sign it.
I'd like to make a, have a motion to approve the action of Cable versus the Village of Suffolk, can I get a motion, please?
I so move.
Motion made by Trustee Soberman, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Hagan.
Second made by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, all right? I'm going to... I sign that agreement right now, that agreement comes effective as of this moment. Chief of Police, please.
Good evening, Board members. On the month of August, the Police Department responded to 982 calls for service. As I believe the Board is aware, the Police Department applies on a yearly basis for a traffic safety grant through the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee. Awards from this grant are allocated for enforcement of seatbelt violations and to reduce dangerous driving behaviors in an effort to reduce serious injuries and death from traffic crashes. I'm happy to advise the Board that we were again awarded funding through this grant program in the amount of $10,000. These funds will be utilized between October 1 of this year and September 30 of 2023 to supplement our traffic enforcement efforts. I have two agenda items for the Board's consideration tonight. My first agenda item at this time, it is my honor to request that the Board appoint Police Officer Abigail Adams to the position of Sergeant. Officer Adams holds a bachelor's degree from Arkansas Tech University in Psychology with a minor in Criminal Justice and a master's degree from Iona College, excuse me, in Criminal Justice and Cyber Security. Officer Adams began her career with the Suffolk Police Department as a dispatcher in 2015 and was appointed to the position of Police Officer in 2017. In addition to her regular patrol duties, she serves as one of the department's evidence and property custodians, as well as an Assistant Accreditation Program Manager and Field Training Officer. She has received several awards and citations throughout her career and proactively pursues training opportunities, resulting in over 500 hours of in-service training. I believe this promotion is well-deserved, and I'm confident that Officer Adams will make a competent supervisor, as well as a respected leader amongst the rank and file.
I'd like to, first of all, welcome all her family, her mom and dad, I see in the audience, I don't know if anyone else is their relatives to her, and all the other police officers, and all her friends here to this, to this meeting here, and can I please have a motion to appoint Abigail Adams to the position of Sergeant effective September 13, 2022, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second made by Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Will you please bring her into?
Yes, sir, thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Officer Adams and her parents, Doctors Lisa and Douglas Adams up, so the Village Clerk, Ms. Raymer, can administer her oath of office, and she can be presented her shields.
May I please raise your hand? This is our Pino committee. I, State Your Name.
I, Abigail Adams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Sergeant.
The duties of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability, I will do as I will. In the sun, your face. Congratulations, best of luck.
Let's not have a working comp complaints yet. Congratulations.
For my next agenda item, at this point, I would like to respectfully request that the Board nominate Mr. Andrew Alvarado as a full-time police officer to fill a current vacant position. This nomination will allow the Rockland County Department of Personnel to clear Mr. Alvarado for permanent appointment. Mr. Alvarado is currently a New York City Police Officer assigned to the Criminal Intelligence Section. Prior to that assignment, he worked in the 44th Precinct as a patrol officer and a member of the Anti-Crime Unit. Mr. Alvarado is currently a member of the Suffolk Volunteer Fire Department and is a village resident. Mr. Alvarado's prior police experience and his strong community ties will make him a welcome addition to the Police Department, as well as the Village of Suffolk.
This Board had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Alvarado, and we find that he's an exceptional gentleman, who's a police officer in New York City, and we'd love to have him as part of Suffolk Police Department, so I'd like to have a motion nominating Andrew Alvarado as a subordinate Police Officer for the Village of Suffolk. Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion made by Trustee Albert, can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Second made by Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Chief gives a party, make sure you invite me, do the right thing, okay? Department of Public Works, please. Abby, you can go now, you don't have to hang out here. I was getting nervous about the overtime myself in the back of the room.
Good evening, Board. First resolution authorizing payment of application number four to Hush Electrical Company for the backup power for the Gosha Project Critical Facilities Project.
Anybody have any questions on that before? I'll make a motion. Can I have a motion, please? Authorizing the payment of application for number four, Hush Electrical?
Motion.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Soberman.
Second made by Trustee Soberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next resolution, authorizing payment of application number seven to TAM Enterprises, Inc., again for Gosha Project, the Hardening of Water Treatment Plant Project.
Can I have a motion for resolution authorizing payment of the application for number seven to the TAM Enterprises?
Trustee Soberman.
Motion made by Trustee Soberman, can I get a second, please?
Second by Trustee Hagan.
Trustee, by Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next resolution is authorizing change order number two to TAM Enterprises, Inc., for the Hardening, Gosha Project Hardening of Water Treatment Plant Project.
Charles, just explain that a little bit to them, how we had to, when the original thing was done, and it wasn't a door, and it wasn't drained, so they understood.
So that change order is, comprises three elements. The first element is for well number two. Well number two was constructed in 1937, and it is 102 feet in depth, it consists of a 30-inch outer casing with a 16-inch diameter inner casing. So after the well number two building was demolished, it was, it was noticed that the inner, 16-inch inner casing was, not skew, was not plumb, sitting inside the 30-inch outer casing. So it was determined that we would need to correct that, and that correction will be done when the start of the construction of wellhouse number two, if the Board approves it.
Thank you, Charles. Can I get a motion for resolution authorizing the change order number two?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan, I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Soberman.
Second made by Trustee Soberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Charles?
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer Mike Janito, please.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, we have three resolutions for the Board's consideration. The first is to amend the 2022, the current year's budget in the general fund. Essentially, there was a project, the Muse Project, the Washington Muse Project, wherein we are receiving over $100,000 in building department fees, and the building department, the work of reviewing the plans by the building department cannot be done with the building department's own resources, so they're going to use a third party, an outside third party, and while we don't know exactly what the cost will be, it's estimated to be somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000. This is simply to amend the budget to allow to, an increase in the appropriations for the building department of $20,000, and increase the revenues side by $20,000.
Right. Okay, can I have a motion to amend the 2220 budget for building plan review services, you know, pending receival of that check, Mr. Janito, okay?
Motion, Trustee Hagan.
Motion made by Trustee Hagan?
Second.
Second by Trustee Soberman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second one is also to amend the budget. Mayor, you just mentioned that they were going to have a, or that the Board approved the settlement of the Cable versus Suffolk. The part of that settlement is for us, the village, to pay $52,000 out of payroll, and that money is going to be reimbursed to us from insurance proceeds, so we're asking that we can amend the budget to show that, increase the amount being spent on salaries and increase the estimated revenues coming in from insurance recoveries.
Can I get a motion amending the 2022, 2023 general fund budget? Can I get a motion amending the 2022, 2023 general fund budget for insurance recoveries?
I so move.
Motion made by Trustee Salvman. Second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
The third item is that the Department of Public Works has, is requiring a, what's called a cold planer. This has to do with smoothing out potholes and ridges on streets and so forth. In any event, they found a used one for $11,800, and we don't have the money in the budget for that. However, it's a perfect utilization of the ARPA-21 funds that we have. So this resolution would authorize us to use those funds to purchase the cold planer.
All right. Just to brief a little more on this, we, there are certain projects that we have, with FEMA, we've met with in different things, which we won't get money for a substantial amount of time, especially like woodland and vista way, huh? So if we can get this, this piece of equipment, we can better than, you know, put it in, like fixing potholes, but a professional way where they can, you know, square off, round it off to do a better job, so we can take care of our residents, right? So they don't break their cars in the road. So can I get a motion authorizing the use of ARPA-21 funds for the DPW skid steer cold planer attachment, please? Trustee Albert. Motion made by Trustee Albert. Second, please?
Second, Corrigan.
Seconded by Trustee Corrigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Mike. At this point, do the trustees have any issues or anything they'd like to discuss?
Can I say something?
Of course.
I just want to thank the village for Suffolk Dog Day. We did that last Saturday, which was great, and thank you for letting us to the flea market this coming Saturday.
Very good.
And thanks for participating. And you guys. Thank you. Pardon? Pardon? Thank you.
Well, I would have said it, anyway, okay, I would have said it in my mayor's report, but yes, the Dog Day was a, I heard a great dog success, and, you know, again, they got a flea market coming up for the Lions Club, a nice, a great organization that helps the people in this village all the time. And I also want to bring up, I would like to make a motion, I was approached by some people in Bon Air and Stone Gate about maybe doing a, like a yard sale across from the Leo Lyden Firehouse. You know, they come, no, we don't have to do any labor on it. They just come set up, and they just want to sell a bunch of stuff in their condo and co-ops and houses up there. So if I could, please, have a, have a motion to help use of the Leo P. Lyden Park for Bon Air and Stone Gate Community Yard Sale on October 8, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, please?
I certainly make such a motion.
Trustee Salvman makes the motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Seconded by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then a motion to grant permit for the Suffolk Chamber of Commons to hold the Suffolk Street Fair on September 8, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, ending assigned contract and proper insurance for us. Can I please have a motion for the Suffolk Street Fair, please?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Motion by, by Trustee Albert. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Seconded by Trustee. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. If I may, I just want to show you this thing that I think I showed to the board before, that the DPW would like to put on the vehicles, okay? So I'd like to make a motion to, you know, it's not, they'll do all the labor down there and stuff, to put it on the actual vehicles themselves, all right?
Center Point of Suffolk.
Center Point of Suffolk. Correct. All right. I think I showed it before. Okay? Is that all right if I make a motion to tack that, that I can put that on the vehicle?
Yeah, we am, and the new monument's on there, too.
So could I have a motion, please, to, do I have a motion, please? That's mine.
Do you want me to throw it to you?
Yeah, you don't want the motion, Joe. All right, we'll do it next meeting. Can I please have a motion, please, to approve the decals on the DPW vehicles? Motion, please?
Trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by Trustee Corrigan and seconded by Trustee Albert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. I guess that's it. I'd like to make a motion, please, to close the meeting.
Motion by Trustee.
Motion made by Trustee Hagan, seconded by Trustee Salvman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Have a great day, folks.